Moving on to the next speaker, speaker number 15, Lashandra Scott, followed by speaker number 16, Stephen Asma, and then speaker number 26, Matthew Luskin. Last call for Lashandra Scott.
My name is Stephen Asma. I'm a professor at Columbia College. My son is a student at La Salle Language Academy. We love La Salle Language Academy. I have nothing but good things to say about the principal and the school. I have kind of a unique challenge here. I know you have bigger fish to fry, but hopefully you will recognize that this is a challenge worth looking at. I was just given a Fulbright Award to teach in Beijing, China for six months, starting in January. I will be taking my son with me to Beijing. I was then told that if he leaves for the five months, in order for us to engage in this state, basically it's a national award given by the Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs, if we in fact go to this amazing opportunity for my son and myself, he will lose his position at La Salle and re-enter the lottery. Essentially, he will not be able to get back into the school. I'm suggesting that the board look at these kinds of policies more carefully and develop some kind of exception for situations like my own, which is basically educational diplomacy. I say this not just for my own son, but obviously in future cases, it seems strange that CPS has a policy that will actually prevent us from going and engaging in these kinds of cultural transmission communications. I offer a couple of reasons for why CPS should look at this scenario again. CPS is a world-class educational system, and as such, it fosters cross-cultural education and experience. Eliminating my son from the school because he and I are engaged in some state-authorized cultural collaboration with China is not in keeping with the wider philosophical goals of CPS. Furthermore, La Salle Language Academy is a language magnet school that prizes, fosters, and pursues cross-cultural experiences and knowledge transmission. There's an excellent Chinese language program at La Salle that my son has excelled in over the last four years.
Mr. Asma, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
It would be counterproductive to eliminate him from the school because he went to China for five months. That really just makes no sense. So I would want to suggest furthermore that CPS offer people like my son a guaranteed re-entry into his magnet school if they leave for some time under a year. This just makes sense and it allows the city to actually be part of an international community.
You're making a good case. Barbara?
Yes, Annette, I would like for Dr. Gurley to meet with you. She's our chief for teaching and learning, and she will investigate and resolve the issue.
Okay, thank you.
David?
Yeah.
I congratulate Professor Asma on getting the Fulbright, and I think he does make a strong case. But even if it was somebody that wasn't doing cultural exchange, somebody for job reasons had to vacate for non-educational cultural reasons, I can see no reason why somebody would have to be subject to the lottery again to get back in it. It's just irrational.
Yeah, I think it's, not only is it irrational, but we need to investigate so that we can determine a broader policy, not just for this specific, so we agree with you.
Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. Asma, there's no issue that's too small for us to deal with, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last call for speaker 26, Matthew Luskin. Our next speaker then will be speaker number 17, please, Latasha Campbell, followed by speaker 18, Eric Johnson, then speaker 20, C. Tillman, followed by speaker 21, Tori Benson. Latasha Campbell, please. Last call for Latasha Campbell. Moving on to Eric Johnson, speaker 18, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Johnson. I'm representing the Illinois Network of Charter Schools, and I am also a proud parent of a CPS student. The Center for Research on Education Outcomes at Stanford University, also known as Credo, released a report this week that looks at charter school performance across the nation. You may have seen it. The report compares achievement among like-traditional and charter public school students according to factors like race, gender, English proficiency, income level, and special education status, an important apples-to-apples look at student academic performance. While Credo's report suggests that charter school quality is uneven in the U.S., it highlights strong charter performance here in Chicago. It finds that local charter schools help to drive greater academic gains for low-income and minority students in Illinois charter schools as a whole. Compared with like-student populations in traditional district schools, consider the following, which we are very proud of. Elementary charter school students made greater learning gains in both reading and math. Low-income charter students, and notably low-income African-American students, experienced greater gains in reading. Low-income Hispanic charter students made greater gains in math. In fact, Hispanic charter students generally are not only outpacing their traditional school counterparts in math, they are also outpacing white traditional school peers as well. And low-income Hispanic charter students are not only outpacing like-traditional school peers in math, but they are also growing at the same rate as white traditional school students that are not living in poverty. It's pretty remarkable. On average, in Chicago charter school students in Credo's study have experienced greater growth in reading and math, and charters are helping to shrink the achievement gap here in the city. We have a lot more work to do to raise the academics achievement for all of Chicago's children, but charters within CPS are providing effective public school options for our families.
Mr. Johnson, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
If you've not done so yet, we encourage you to read the Credo report and consider its findings as we work together to improve achievement for all CPS students.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. C. Tillman, followed by speaker 21, Tori Benson, and then speaker 22, Nicole Mohammed, followed by speaker 28, Kalamati Mohammed, please.
Good morning. My name is Tretunda Tillman, Sr., and first I want to say, God, we need your help on this one. The Federal Reserve is a private banking institution that monopolizes public funds, and that's why Bank of America, Goldman Sachs, and the likes refuse to renegotiate those toxic swaps to save our schools, if that's the actual goal. Mrs. Bennet, and the mayor, you specifically set a mandate that said you would not transfer one school into an underperforming school. At Garrett Morgan Elementary School, with all due respect to Ryder, because we want to save all schools, but case in point, the scores are better at Morgan Elementary School. You're forcing us to go to Ryder. We have a high special education population who utilize the services that the principal, AP, support staff offer to those children. When you put us in Ryder, they don't have a working elevator, and that's $2.5 million to renovate Ryder when we already have the infrastructure in place at Morgan. So why not use that money for the betterment of the children? Now, there's a liquor store on the corner of Garrett Morgan Elementary School that's still open, ma'am, and we don't need to be pacified. We don't need the liquor stores or we don't need the guns and the drugs. We need education, ma'am, with all due respect. Now, my next question to you is simply this. The hearing officer specifically said that Morgan, Stewart, Stockton, Calhoun, Delano, Williams Middle, Mayo, Overton, and Buckingham School should stay open. We respectively pled our case before the board, and the hearing officer said we should stay open.
Mr. Tillman, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
So can you take those hearing officers at their word to keep those schools open? It's important to us because there is no other entities in the neighborhood. If you take Morgan away from that neighborhood, it's going to be nothing but destitute and despair. And most importantly, you know, we matter. Walmart paid for those hearings, and now it's not right for the mayor to say, hey, I don't want to hear what the hearing officers had to say.
Mr. Tillman, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 21, Tori Benson.
My name is Victoria Benson, and I'm the chairperson of the LSC at Portage Park Elementary School. I'm here to advise you that after all is said and done, our budget cut is over $900,000. This cut is massive. We have lost numerous positions, and this cut will directly affect the students of Portage Park. You encouraged the schools to find other ways to obtain resources for their schools, which we did with our cell towers. Now we are informed you'll be taking 2/3 of that money from our school. This is not reasonable, and these funds should remain at Portage Park. Our school does not agree with larger class sizes, and I truly understand the effects it has on children, especially raising a son with high-functioning autism, and observing and helping out in classrooms. Children normally have a hard time focusing, and adding more to the classroom makes it more of a babysitting service than actually educating the child. So our school chose to keep the teachers. However, after all the salaries are paid, it leaves us with little over $185,000 to pay substitutes, textbooks, basic supplies, after-school activities, professional development, technology, cleaning supplies, toilet paper and soap, which averages out to $160 per child a year. The state mandates the new core system onto the teachers and students, but gives us no money to make sure we have supplies and resources to teach this new core. You mandate compliances, but advise us we have to pay for it in our budget. For example, you took away a .5 bilingual teacher. However, if we don't fund it, our school would not be in compliance. This money could have gone directly to the students. In addition, you want us to pay for our supplies, yet we are required to use CPS vendors, so we cannot even find the best deal to make the money stretch. Where is the cost-benefit analysis to determine that these are the best or the most cost-effective vendors? We will be depending on the parents more this year for supplies for our kids, and while I believe in the parents helping out, in these hard times, some parents can barely afford their own households. I recommend you fight for the tax increment financing, so the money is rightly allocated to our children and not to private organizations and businesses. I'm here today to fight for my two sons and all the amazing kids at Portage Park School to make sure they get what they deserve, a great, well-rounded education. As a mom, wife, full-time worker, taxpayer, and a voter, I'm telling you, I don't buy what you are selling, nor do I have trust in this so-called system that is supposedly all about the children.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, will be speaker 28, Kalamati Mohammed, followed by speaker 23, Colleen Dillon, then speaker 24, Wendy Canton, followed by speaker 25, Okema Lewis, and then 27, Andy Harris, please.
Good morning, everyone. Four problems. My name is Kalamat Mohammed, but I represent Young Boys Groom to Men. We're now a program, a youth program that's on the South Side.
Sir, could you speak a little bit more into the mic?
My name is Kalamat Mohammed. I'm representing the not-for-profit company, Young Boys Groom to Men. What it is, is a nonviolent conflict resolution program that help youth who, young boys who basically want to choose to go the wrong way. So we have a bunch of alternatives. The key is, we got 99 solutions and all of you all are one. And the way that it works is, the USTA have had a, hosted a Tenon Under Free Program, which I have applications with me here, and it's free for the children in all the schools. The problem is, it's hard to implement. One, there's no transparency as far as the teachers knowing what to do. And so my recommendation solution is, basically, I can give you the information, and you actually have it on the internet. The United States Tennis Association is located in 50 states. You can even find that out when the U.S. Open is previewed, and the Wimbledon is going on now. The second problem I have is, I have two sons and two schools, and they're court-ordered mothers and fathers. Both mothers are in agreement. The problem is, they are vegans. They were born vegans. And for one year now, I've had to pick up one son and actually take him for lunch from 12 to 1 o'clock. And we just cannot do that the next coming school year. It's taxing me and it's taxing one of the mothers. And then I have the other son going to kindergarten, so he's going to need a free lunch and a free breakfast. The mothers are financially income-friendly. So I, we just need solutions. The third thing is, I've worked with a lot of your staff members. A lot of people say that CPS is a problem, but the problem is, I hear, where's the solution that the parents like myself and others can bring?
Mr. Mohammed, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I will conclude.
Thank you.
I've worked with Mr. Sims behind me, I've had a meeting with Wendy this morning, etc. The key is, we take our time, and you know that it's for the children. We are old now. I'm 52 in October. I've taught tennis in Pasadena, California, Morehouse in Atlanta, Georgia, Chicago Public Schools, and Park District. We just need someone to get back with us when we do reach out to you. And let's have a safe summer and enjoy ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Colleen Dillon. Last call. Our next speaker then will be Wendy Canton.
Good afternoon. I'm Wendy Canton. I'm the director of the parent group Raise Your Hand. I'm handing in a list of budget cuts that my group is compiling. With 125 schools reporting so far, we're around $80 million in school-based cuts. My son's school, Burley, closed out five positions last week. My local high school closed out 11 positions. I don't know if you know about Burley, but we were one of 12 schools in the country to win the International Reading Association Exemplary Reading Award last year, the only school in the state to win that award. We had to cut our reading specialists last week and many other positions because we could almost only afford homeroom teachers for our school. The full day is going to be pretty empty at Burley Elementary this fall. Did school closings add to the deficit this year? We wouldn't know because you voted on them with no cost-benefit analysis. We know that because a parent did a FOIA and found it out. Thank you for your strong and responsible fiduciary responsibility that you showed to the taxpayers of Chicago. It's not funny. Our schools have nothing left. You've added programs. You've added 13 charters for operational costs. You've added STEM and IB that isn't even real IB. You're adding more and more while you are cutting and not even preserving programs that you have right before your very eyes at schools like Burley Elementary. We know you can't make sense of this system because we have a new CEO every year who doesn't know what's going on in our schools. We get that. It's true. We have things that work. Please come to Burley. We made this program in the 90s when we had 90% low-income population.
Ms. Canton?
I will conclude.
Ms. Canton, thank you.
We will do everything this summer to help restore the revenue. We need a long-term solution at the state level, and the pension issue doesn't even deal with the Chicago teacher pension, so we don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Ms. Canton.
Are you trying to get a pension holiday, maybe, but tell people the truth. I had to find that out from my legislator.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, is Okema Lewis. Last call for Okema Lewis. Next speaker, please. Andy Harris, followed by speaker 29, Robert Jewell.
I'm Andy Harris. I stand here today as a business leader in our community and also a Burley Elementary School parent. I have built businesses here in Chicago and understand what it takes to run a business. And let me be clear, schools should not be run like businesses. We need to invest, we need to invest in our schools, not slash budgets and implement unreasonable cost-cutting measures. My kids will have a longer day, thanks to Rahm Emanuel, that will be empty due to 600K being cut from our budget. We will have five less positions, so our kids will go without or have less art, music, gym, Spanish, and technology. This is completely unacceptable. Schools cannot operate without a budget for supplies and building repairs, especially when you have to use CPS vendors. The idea that a teacher, no matter how well he or she is evaluated, can be an effective facilitator of learning, and also be a social worker, conflict mediator, art teacher, Spanish teacher, gym teacher, and have over 35 kids in the classroom, is insane. I watched a Golden Apple Award-winning teacher this year struggle to do right by her students because with 34 kids in her class, she could not possibly break down all the barriers that children face to learning with such a large class size. The belief that schools can and should do more with less is ridiculous. The teachers need to work with the city's leadership to get TIP funds back to the children and do the things that set them up for success, no matter what that means for each child. I made a choice to raise my children here in the city because I believed in my school and I believed in my community. Like many parents, I am now faced with disgust at how CPS has handled these budget cuts. We need transparency.
Ms. Harris, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
We need transparency and honesty as to where our hard-earned money is going and why CPS doesn't want to give our kids education they need to succeed. What was the point of closing 50 schools if we have no ROI? Mayor Emanuel promotes Chicago as a world-class city, so why on earth would this Board of Ed give our kids a third-world education?
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Our next speaker. Our next speaker will be Robert Jewell, followed by speaker number 30, please, Rochelle Davis, and then speaker 43, Jose Hernandez, then 47, Liliana Hernandez, and then 48, Claudia Terraso.
Hello. My name is Bob Jewell. I am president of Education Media. Please bear with me as I am not a polished public speaker. However, that will not change the fact that this opportunity truly is a home run for the Chicago public schools. What is our goal at Education Media? Our goal is to give your district money. Yes, money. We will give your district money while enhancing student education and building school pride. Education Media can do this all at no cost or no risk to the participating school districts. Education Media uses dead space on your school walls to post educational, nutritional, or motivational messages. These 4x8, 32-square-foot public service messages are designed to encourage good choices, motivate students, and promote positive thinking. Our student design program teaches students real-life media in a real-life setting. The students design marketing campaigns for real businesses, and the end result is probably posted on your school walls. Please open your media packets to view just a few samples that I brought along. Education Media offers other opportunities and can find sponsors for things like lunch trays, equipment, monument signs, and facilities. How can we help your school district? Simple. We give your district money, short and sweet. Education Media will pay your school for every paid public service announcement posted on your walls.
Mr. Jewell, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
The payout will range from $100 to $300 per board per month. In closing, let me just say, I cannot solve all of your budget issues, but I certainly can help. Dr. Barrett Bennett, I would like to know how I can proceed forward with this.
Clearly, Tim Colley, if we could, Tim, would you get his number and information? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 30, Rochelle Davis.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Rochelle Davis, and I'm president and CEO of the Healthy Schools Campaign. Our work is based on the simple and common sense notion that healthy students are better learners and that health and wellness should be incorporated into every aspect of the school experience. For the last nine months, we have worked with CPS to solicit input on the school meal program through two district-wide advisory committees, one with citywide stakeholders and one with parents. The advisory groups developed action plans for each of 10 pathways to achieving excellence in school food. The report, which was provided to you, details these action plans, and you should have received them. The Food Service Management Contract that you will be voting on today reflects this community input in a number of key ways. First, the contract upholds CPS's commitment to high-nutrition standards. Secondly, the contract expands the local and sustainable purchasing program from 2/3 of the schools to all schools. And finally, the contract changes the model for most of the 176 schools, which receive pre-plated, vended meals, to a traditional bulk-service meal program. This will increase students, the appeal it has to students. In addition, there are a number of features in the Airmark proposal, which you are going to be considering, which we are particularly excited about, including an innovative system for expanding and tracking local procurement, and the inclusion of organic romaine lettuce and Maine corse salads, and a plan to improve the presentation of food. We look forward to working with CPS and Airmark to implement all of the recommendations in the advisory committee's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Our next speaker, please. Jose Hernandez.
Hello. My name is Jose Hernandez. I'm a member of the Local School Council at Kameka Academy, as well as Kelly High School. I'm also a current member and the vice president for the Local School Council Advisory Board. In a school district as large as Chicago's, it's very, and with 43.3 overweight and obese students, it's very important to continue to move in the direction of a healthier CPS. Studies show healthier students perform better academically. As a member of the Parents' School Food Advisory Group, I am pleased to learn that under the new service, food service contract, the district will be transitioning away from frozen, pre-plated lunches, and for that, I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Our next speaker then will be Liliana Hernandez.
Hola. Mi nombre es Liliana Hernandez. Soy padre de la escuela de Lywinny. Soy miembro de Padres Unidos para Escuelas Saludables y formo parte del Consejo Escolar Local. Yo estoy aquí para apoyar a los esfuerzos de CPS por su compromiso con la comida y los estamos a seguir para que los padres participen en el esfuerzo de mejorar las comidas escolares, proporcionando oportunidades de participar incluyendo oportunidades educativas que aumentan la conciencia en entendimiento para apoyar los programas de comidas escolares saludables.
My name is Liliana Hernandez. I am a parent at the Lywinny. I am a member of the Parents United for Healthy Schools, and also I am a member of the Local School Council. I am here to support CPS efforts to engage the community, and I urge you to continue involving parents in the effort of improving school meals by providing engagement opportunities that include educational opportunities to raise awareness and understanding in supporting healthy school meal programs. As you may already know, successful school initiatives always involve parent and community support. This type of parent and community involvement is very important when it comes to school food. We encourage CPS to develop and implement strategies to educate parents and to broaden the community knowledge about the importance of healthy eating and how it relates to the academic achievement.
Ms. Hernandez, can you please conclude?
Okay, thank you.
We also want for CPS to develop and promote a feedback mechanism for students and parents on the school menu offerings, to engage on a regular basis of discussion with parents and the community using the existing channels, and to expand the opportunities for the community members to share their expertise, the feedback, and other information through the formal and informal communications networks.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Our next speaker then is Claudia Terraso. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker. Speaker number 31, please, Amisha Patel, then speaker number 32, Maria Kantonambi, followed by speaker 34, Stephanie Golderman, and then speaker 33, Christopher Baugh, please. Last call for Amisha Patel. Last call for Maria Kantonambi. Last call for Stephanie Golderman. Christopher Baugh, please.
Good afternoon. The parents and teachers who make up more than a score are disturbed by the 24 May draft of CPS's performance policy for 2014-15. Like the current policy, 70% of the measures for the 4K through 8 come from a single source, in this case, the Northwest Education Association's Measures of Academic Progress, or MAP. This policy creates another high-stakes test beyond the ISAT and PARC. Instead of reducing high-stakes testing, this policy would increase high-stakes testing in a CPS. in a CPS. This will increase stress on students in the spring and further distract them from real education. The draft policy mirrors the measures in the federally mandated adequate yearly progress reports, more so than the current policy does. So now we have redundant high-stakes testing. The MAP was not created to judge schools, but indicates student growth, how much they learn. Comparing the performance of Chicago students to the nationally-normed sample without first controlling for the differences between each school's population and the nationally-normed sample puts schools in poor neighborhoods at a very distinct disadvantage. When the NWEA established its 2011 norms, Illinois required the most correction in the post-stratification process under NWEA's School Challenge Index to bring the mean for Illinois to the national mean because of the severe economic challenges facing Chicago's students.
Mr. Baugh, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yep.
Thank you.
The draft were, the draft keeps using the word accountability, but that word doesn't mean what the drafters think it means. To be accountable means to provide an accounting of what happened. The contents of the MAP are proprietary, so we have no way of knowing what our children know. This is a flaw with the ISAT, too. The draft policy would not explain why our children or our schools performed well or poorly, and that is what parents and the public need to know for there to be accountability.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh.
All that parents receive now, under this policy, is a score, and our children are more than a score. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Our next speaker will be Speaker number 35, LaShara Wilson, followed by Speaker 36, Caroline Bellicky, then Speaker 37, Jesus Campuzano, and Speaker 38, please, Marcella Holmes. LaShara Wilson. Moving on to 36, Caroline Bellicky, please.
My name is Caroline Bellicky, and I'm a parent of three children who are with me today at Disney Tube Magnet School, which lost $270,000 in the transition to system-wide per-pupil funding and despite a planned expansion to high school. However, I'm here today to ask the board to reconsider its 2011 decision based on the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations of the time regarding admission of teachers' children to magnet schools. My family has benefited from the 2011 revision to Policy Number 602.2, and I can report firsthand the peace of mind I feel in knowing each of my children have an opportunity to share experiences, teachers, and community. So I'd like you to consider amending the current policy to include a provision for magnet teachers' children. Such an amendment could include a percentage of the class and/or a length-of-service requirement I've provided, I've included sample wording in handouts that I provided earlier. I believe a policy that supports enrollment of teachers' children in the schools where they teach is in the best interest of the board for three reasons. First, it keeps families and school communities together, emphasizing the shared experience of school and learning. Second, it keeps great teachers in CPS, which provides students with a stability that is so critical in these times. And finally, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellicky. Our next speaker, please, Jesus Campuzano.
I am here today as an ally and a friend to students from around the city of Chicago. We are fed up with this board closing our schools, firing our teachers, slashing our funds. This year alone, you managed to close 49 schools, cut millions of dollars, proving that this is not a board of education, but a board of destruction. If the board says that there is no money in the budget for our schools, then where do you get the money for charter schools? The board and the city have money but refuse to support public and minorities. Instead, you rather help, you rather help the entrance of the super-rich. This proves that there is nothing public in CPS. I will conclude now, I will conclude, because my two minutes are almost up. I have a few suggestions that I want to make. One, disband this board, disband this board of education and elect a Democratic Board of Education. Two, stop giving money to charter schools and give it to our public schools. Three, use TIF funds to fund the public schools and not the private schools, charter schools. These are demands. The future of students from around Chicago is in your hands. What will you do?
Thank you, Mr. Campuzano. Our next speaker, please.